Yeah, maybe somebody.
Yeah.
I mean, can you hear us?
Yeah.
Yep, I got you.
All right, call the order, the zoning board of appeals meeting for November thirteenth, twenty twenty four. And everybody I'm sure has reviewed the minutes, so we need approval of the minutes from the October ninth.
Roll call?
Twenty twenty four.
Would you roll call?
Yeah.
It's your side.
Here.
Blutch.
Here.
Uh, Huglins.
Here.
Me.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Swanson.
Epstein.
Uh, Legaman.
Here.
Okay, there are motions for approval of the minutes.
I make a motion to approve.
Oh, second.
Another roll call, please. Sorry, who's motion? Motion by?
Blutch.
Uh, Blutch and second by?
Me.
Me. And then do you recall, uh, Durstak?
Yes.
Blutch.
Yes.
Huglins.
Yes.
Me.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Legaman.
Yes.
Uh, yeah, so ready. Reminds, I'm good. Good, thank you.
Uh, new business, number two on the agenda, ZBA twenty twenty four dash zero one two. Public hearing for a map amendment from urban transition district to a light industrial district for property commonly known as thirteen thousand and thirteen thousand nineteen North Second Street. Just going to present that.
So these two properties are just to the east of highway two fifty one. Kinda in the kinda middle part of the village's uh, territory. Uh, right now they're outside the village, but they'll be getting annexed in uh, the next village board meeting, Joe, I think.
Yes.
Yeah. So any new land that comes in the village is automatically uh, zoned urban transition. And this kinda creates a, this, uh, the UT zoning district doesn't really have that many land uses that are kinda workable, it's kind of like a, like it kind of implies it's a transition uh, transitionary district. The use that's looking to go there is a bounce house, outdoor recreation rental business. And it sounds like they have a pretty large storage facility they wanna construct. Um. So kinda with the f- the same philosophy that we had with Forest City Gear last month with their storage facility, we thought that zoning that industrial light and having an industrial light use for that storage facility was really kinda the most compatible thing that we could have that would um, make sure that they're beholden to a couple of those industrial light zoning bulk minimum or bulk maximums and things. Um. So putting into that industrial light district also is compatible with a number of the surrounding properties as well, there's some general industrials, some heavy industrial and some highway commercial that's out there, so a little bit heavier of uses. But um, putting light industrial out there in that um, in that mix shouldn't be incompatible or any sort of have any sort of negative impact on the area around it.
We've um, the applicants and attorney chap like are here uh, as well, or sure chairman. I have them.
Yeah, here's my present first, so we need to get your names, please.
Yeah, Casey Chatterick, um, the attorney for Rogue Event Rentals, the petitioner by purchaser of this property um, and.
I was plodding, uh, owner of Rogue Event Rentals purchaser property.
Did you get those?
I did.
Yep.
And you both swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yeah.
Yes.
Perfect, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I mean, I think Evan uh, presented obviously for us, uh, uh, pretty much, uh, so I don't wanna belabor too much of the point, but I think that this is, he already has an existing business, he'd like to obviously locate here in Roscoe. Um, and develop this property that's currently unincorporated in Winnebago County. Um, it is consistent with, I think, the uses around there to be light industrial. Um, he'd like to expand and develop a, put in a, a look eleven thousand five hundred square foot building for additional storage, so there's an existing building on the, on the property, there's two lots. Um, and so he'd like to expand and put a, a digital building on that as well for their use. There wouldn't be, the storage wouldn't be have any outside storage, the only time that they would have any of the equipment outside would be for washing, drying, and then placing back into um, storage um. There wouldn't, there would be um, some office use and then some maybe um, you know, incidental, you know, display area in the front and the office area so that people could see what was available, make appointments and, and schedule, um, but otherwise it's going to be mainly the employees that come in and take the, the equipment out to deliver for the appointments. If you have any questions that you'd like to ask either me or the?
It's where, where's it at?
Um, it's by like the waste management transfer plant is.
Oh, okay.
Right next to it, um, probably around there, I should say. That's uh, service road.
Let's see, uh. Is the fire department inspect these things and sign off on them at a certain rate?
Um, they're, they'll provide the site plan when we get to the site plan, this is just the result, it's already, there's already a building up there, so I'm not, I mean, the fire department's here, they can comment on that, but there's already a building there, it's in their district, so they would be currently
Yes.
already inspecting it, I suppose.
But, yeah, so at a certain point, you guys will sign off on it, it's all just.
Get your question.
I think, yeah, there's intent to build a, another building out there, and then we'll come for design review. The whole process, it's just sort of moving. First up is just the, for the uh, orientation and the soundings.
I'm waiting to see, I'm just, where, where was that actually?
Yeah, that.
No, no points on the map there for reference, those are lot numbers. Seems.
You know, Anon uh, auto sales out there? Anon auto sales.
Okay.
And then in between that and the, the foundry and then waste managements before that, so it's on that section, I got you.
Seems funny.
Seems consistent.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did anybody wish to speak?
Yeah, yeah.
I think there's enough for the board to see if you'd like, but for, we'll be, I'm screening the building here, um, waste managements here, state wing foundry. The big foundry buildings there, right, the roads up here, so it's just
Yeah.
down on that frontage road. Or a, a curry here.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Second, um, and the roll call will be Durstak?
Yes.
Uh, Blutch?
Yes.
Huglins?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Yeah.
No way.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See, three on the agenda, ZBA twenty twenty four dash zero one three, design review for approval of a five thousand three hundred fifty four square foot four family residential structure located at lot zero three one Mallet Farm.
So yeah, this is just right off of Flat Willow Drive, then the reason this is coming is because it's a four unit uh, residential building, anything less, they can go through a regular zoning permit and then the building permit through the county, but uh, anything this large, they gotta come through for design review, um. The use is compatible with uh, the other multifamily buildings in the area, uh, there are a couple four unit buildings out there. Um, it's compatible with the uh, residential, uh, multifamily residential zoning district, uh, there's no issue with the the bulk requirements of anything. Uh, the architecture of the building looks high quality and appears generally uh, aesthetically pleasing. Um, it's a navy blue kind of vinyl siding and then black shingles and um, again, just higher, uh, higher quality material, um. So staff recommends approval of the design review.
Oh, now that I believe is here, yes, please.
Yeah, go ahead, talk about your project.
Alright, so Amanda Darko, uh, we worked, um, with Ambassador Holmes.
Um, excuse me, and you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but, thank you. Perfect, go ahead, please.
Um, this little piece of property, been uh, been kinda back and forth with uh, village and zoning, um, trying to um, get into uh, the area where we can put this building so it fits nicely and it's got the nice driveway and everything else. Um, and I think we got the, we got a custom plan for this um, narrow lot. Um, hoping that once we get this in, maybe some of these other people could possibly sell, this has been vacant for a long time. Um, that's, that whole subdivision is not as, as good looking as some other ones that we built in, um. Uh, but this is the only plan that I think can fit on that uh, long lot, we were at first we were trying to put in like three duplexes, that didn't really work out really good, but um, I think uh, with the uh, with what we got now and how we designed the driveways, everything else with the landscaping, lights and everything should fit that uh, pretty nicely, um.
Is this the lot with the for sale sign?
Sorry, yes, sir.
Lot with a for sale.
Yeah, it's, it's been, it's been for sale uh, for a pretty long time, I think, uh, they dropped the price, uh, it's like last year sometimes they had it uh, for uh, like a hundred grand or something like that, so they dropped it now to uh, uh, where it should be, I think. Um, so uh, it, it, it should fit in pretty good, I think, with it. Um, I know there was a septic well uh, before on it, but I was told there's laterals uh, on this uh, in this subdivision now. I just don't know, I've never seen them on Avengers to see exactly where the laterals are, but I was told by uh, uh, an agent, there's hookups, so open if there is hookups there.
I'm just going with the map, there's some questions about with the location, we're exactly at what is, um, sure everybody can see, that's, so Bridge Street is
I don't know if you, you guys have?
They, they have that too, I think just being relative, I think, to the rest of the village, this is Bridge Street up here. Village Hall, obviously up that way, Bridge Street, it's just down Main Street, up a flat Willow. It's just down that way. A few blocks, I suppose, um.
Can I go by the data, I said it was a for sale sign, so that was my guess, that's what it was.
And yeah, it is a strange, not strange, it's in very narrow lots, so and it's in a subdivision with multifamily, so it mixes in there, but I know applicants have been working very well, darker's been working very well with the village, we're trying to find something that would fit in there and, you know, stand work with that property. Um, and this, what you got for designing view is sort of what staff recommends, we've worked with staff, engineering, uh, zoning, uh, on this to get to this, to this point. Um, including the, I had the, do you have, if you, trying to be of the driveway? That was, that was sort of a pilot issue, was how the design always don't work, so I did, we are oh, out port up, actually, so they can see it.
Just making sure that, that driveway kinda fits and uh, you know, I think the last revision was we had to have that island in for the landscaping and everything else, but um, I think it works now, we had to move the building to the back a little bit, which a little bit more expense on our end, just because of the sewer and water and everything else, the footage of that and obviously the driveway that we have to put in. But um, but it looks good.
I mean, yeah, can't beat up your village, oh, you make your village standards for the driveways, for the barriers, and I also got this.
Right.
There are similar houses on that property or in that neighborhood, which are just sort of open, wide, concrete drives from our previous codes and kind of to bring you up to the current standard or have us current standards, which I think does look much better and I think it'd be a great, you know, great development there.
I, I hope so, I mean, we got uh, pretty nice, it's a uh, flat over flat type of a uh, uh, design and uh, the first, uh, first floor, uh, I think was uh, longer twelve hundred square feet and the second floor is fifteen hundred square feet, so three bedroom, two bath and then two bedroom, two bath. Hope, hoping to get, you know, nice rents with that, that was that area that showed that, you know, um, that rental was needed, uh, just being close to the IMCA, being close to that, you know, main, uh, main street area and rocks, so everything else, so.
I, I know it's the over on Willowbrook, those are yours too, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, cuz at first glance, I thought it was similar to that, but it's gonna be a little different than those.
No, tho- those would be, those are uh, townhomes, so those are townhomes, this is flat over flat, yeah.
No basement?
There's no basement, but they're flat over flat, and they're gonna have little balconies in the back and um, uh, both are gonna be entering to, from the sides. Those are garages underneath and um, and they're only one car garage. Which these are as well, but they're, you know, it's got first and second floor.
And the multifamilies over there now are probably around six square foot.
About fifteen hundred square feet, same as the, the, the second floor is on this one, yeah.
It's nice, I like, they look nice over there.
Yeah, yeah, we were supposed to do another three, yeah, they do look nice, we, we do have calls on them.
All right, further questions? Thank you.
Yeah.
Everybody here, tenants, so here to speak to the project? I think, okay, we need uh, option two.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by me, it's second by Huglins. Yeah. And I know how it be, Blutch?
Yes.
Huglins?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Legaman?
Yes.
Durstak?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For the agenda, ZBA twenty twenty four dash zero one four. Design review for approval of an ADA accessible ramp located at one zero nine one five Main Street.
Yeah, so this is the uh, American Family Insurance Office up towards the Methodist Church, kinda to the north from Village Hall. Um, this work was done before a zoning permit and building permit were taken out, so this is kinda being retroactively approved, but um, this is a twenty five foot kinda ADA wheelchair accessible ramp for the business, uh, the business there. Um, it doesn't really add on to the square footage of the business significantly and doesn't extend any farther into the west, east, or south setback, but it obviously extends um, a, a few feet to the north, but it doesn't go anywhere near the actual setback line. Uh, it's well within the bulk dimension uh, standards and the code for the district and staff recommends approval.
Good evening, everybody.
Hi. Get your name, please.
My name's Brent Blair, uh, I'm an attorney, I represent Van Nichols, he was unable to be here.
Great, you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
It was prepared, thank you. So I don't have really any prepared remarks. Um, my client got a little bit ahead of himself, I would admit that, he wouldn't want to admit that. Um, he thought this all got approved, he appeared before y'all sometime in the past and then was working with Scott Sanders, who I understand, I think it's Scott Sanders, he's no longer here. So he got a little bit ahead of himself, but we had an engineer drawing done, which has been submitted. And uh, as, as been represented already, we didn't add anything to the existing structure other than uh, the handicap accessible ramp, which I told is ADA compliant. And then, of course, the parking lot, which consists of uh, four spaces total, one of which is uh, handicap accessible also. So if you've been by this project, which is just a a lot, after so, I think here, um, my view, having uh, like, and the contractors did a very nice job, I think it, I think it's very attractive work. So just ask you to approve it. How do we know that are ADA acceptable? Well, I, I, I personally don't know that, that's, that's what I've been told, there's a
We have, yeah, the drawings, you know.
Are found slope ratio, or I'm not sure that's the right terminology.
Yeah.
It, it's not much, uh, it's not much of a slope, I think it's probably less than what's allowed. But I don't know that for fact, cuz I don't know.
So those are the drawings submitted by the architects, um, which you indicated is properly slanted slopes. So we do have it anywhere out there, measured it, they measured it, yeah.
Alright, whatever the correct language is.
That was one of the requirements, was to provide the architectural drawing to have in front of you, so that is verified now. You know, he went out there and double checked that. And we, sort of the only strange thing about this, well, orientation too, it's coming out of the facts, uh, on this property is that this is, it's the setback is legal law conforming, just because it's, it was residential and now it's commercial. And on Main Street, we've got sort of different setbacks for that, so um, when it was residential and built, it was, and that the setbacks for residential, however, since it's commercial, which happens to lie on the properties on Main Street, something particularly about this property, um, is outside of that setback requirement, but that's one of those sort of little fluke things, probably legal law conforming, it's legal there, it's, it's, it meets, you know, meets certain ordinance, it's not, as we were saying, wrong or bad. It just wouldn't meet the current ordinance if it was rebuilt.
Yeah, the pre-existing structure is inside the setback, but my understanding is uh, was built in nineteen twenty nine, so.
So it's, and one of those things we have.
That wasn't there when it was built.
Yeah, a couple of those problems.
Yeah, so it's uh, it's, yeah, it's, it was built, it was cracked when it was built.
Yeah, it's, it's a very old, uh, one that's been just trade, uh, converted into a smaller space.
Is this something that public safety takes a look at, police or fire, or?
I don't think the police department looks at that, I don't know that the fire department really checks the, checks those types of things, well. They would review the initial.
Not aware of that requirement.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, very good, thank you.
Any other board discussion? Need a motion to approve, please?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Motion by Blutch. Second by Smith. Huglins?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Uh, Legaman?
Yes.
Durstak?
Yes.
Blutch? Yes.
Motion approved, and that's by review, so it's all if you, this won't go in the board, it's approved here, alright, you're all set?
Alright, thank you very much, folks. Have a good evening.
Thank you, thank your client for working with us on that, we appreciate it.
I appreciate uh, you work with Kate, but thank you.
Five, ZBA two zero two four dash zero one five, public hearing for a tax amendment. Revising the Village of Roscoe zoning ordinance sections fifteen dash fifty one six, fifteen dash five one seven, and fifteen dash seven five two related to accessory buildings and accessory structures.
Yeah, so this is kinda in the process of Vandewall and Associates being the uh, consultant zoning administrator for the village, we've been working with Joe and Janelle kinda to identify and fill in some gaps in the code where there might be some, and maybe clarify some things in the code where we think that maybe the, the residents or maybe somebody looking at the code might um, have it a fair little better uh, with them taking a look at it, so this is the first of two tonight, this is the accessory buildings and accessory structures. Uh, in short, the changes to the code. It first defines accessory structure in the code, of which it's not right now. Uh, it defines the number of accessory buildings allowed, uh, and that kinda relates to uh, detached or attached garages on a property. Uh, that's commonplace with a lot of codes that we see and we work with at Vandewall and Associates. Um, it's, it, a lot of accessory building codes are kinda based off of if you have an accessory or, or an attached or detached garage and maybe a, giving a little leeway towards people with a detached one to have yet another accessory uh, building. Um, and then it streamlines uh, the permitting process for smaller accessory buildings, so uh, a lot of different communities say that okay, if you have something that's less than a hundred and fifty square feet, uh, a zoning permit isn't required and you can just go get a building permit. Um, so it streamlines that process a little bit in the code. Um, and then it de- uh, defines the number of accessory structures in the code as well. So in short, those are the, the, the big changes. Um, and it just, uh, acts as a little bit more of a clarification measure and a little bit of a streamlining measure for the village.
Questions, anyone else, I'm trying to step on your toes.
No, no, go, go ahead.
I mean, this, and this really is something we've seen, and you prob- you have seen in front of you the last four months here, um, well, at least the last four, or in that house, six months or seven months. Um, and I'm probably, I am probably before that too, since we adopted a new zoning code. There are just a few things under that new zoning code we adopted in twenty twenty one that were probably you know, overlooked or during the combination, when they combined both the old code and new code suggestions. Some of these things were sort of missing and as we've been trying to actually implement our zoning ordinance and actually process these applications coming forward, we've run into some of these questions ourselves. You know, where that's missing, really missing out of the code, where's a lot of interpretation on our part, or sometimes it's clear that it may have each is missing or conflicting. And so, yeah, as we go through here, you'll, we'll see more of these throughout the year, um, without then, uh, I'm back around presenting some additional suggestions, but I think tonight's mostly is just to help with some of the, the clarifications. Um, it's particularly, yeah, we've got the accessory buildings, accessory structures, I'm sure you've seen those differences before. And they are, they're two different things in our code, now actually defines uh, all that well, so it's one of those things that was added on there, and then what we've seen here, several buildings coming through recently um, are those attached garages, how accessory structures work with that, um, are you like to have another shed there, is the countess accessory building, accessory structure? It's now you have two because you buy a attached garage, how is that treated, so it sort of helps with that as well. Uh, any of these code revisions, I mean, feel free to make suggestions, revisions, comments, lay it over if you wanna look at it more and discuss more, um. But yeah, place to start at least, let's bring this forward to you. This is my two cents, I can.
What, what size did you say we would need a building permit for?
Um, I listed here in the section five one six revision, it says on property or with, um, accessory buildings totaling one hundred square feet or less may be constructed without the need of a zoning permit, but must be at least five feet from any property line and may not be placed in the front or side yards. So they would have to put it in the, in their backyard and then keep it at least five feet from any property line.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So when I look at um, some of the definitions of what is and what isn't, I see recreational structures and something was mentioned in there about swing sets.
Mm-hmm.
What does this mean to swing sets, if somebody's back here?
So in we, we defined accessory structure in a way that includes things like playsets, swing sets. In a way that includes things like playsets, swing sets. Um, pretty much any, anything you can, that outdoor recreational. Kind of encompasses all those kinds of things. Um, so in the accessory structures code. Or re- or revision. You would be allowed no more than two accessory structures per parcel. So you could have a swing set and then a gazebo or something. Um. And then anything that's, any accessory structure that's three feet or taller. Would need to comply with the, uh, required setbacks for accessory buildings as well. So. The same things as, as if you would have a shed, you would have to meet the same standards if you had a gazebo.
And if you had a shed, you could have a swing set. But not a third item.
Correct.
Whatever that may be.
Right.
Is that standard to include swing sets, uh? In other municipalities, get something like this?
Yeah, yeah. A, a lot of times you won't see municipalities really. Um. Enforce a lot of accessory structured type codes for a lot of the smaller like playsets and things. But you will see them be a little bit more stringent on like gazebos or, uh, larger like, um. Trying to, what's the name of the, um? Yeah.
Interception here too. And we say swing sets too, um. You know, we're talking like, we've, we've seen a lot, we have seen some of these come through. It's not just a piece of metal with some swings on it. We're talking about, we, we've seen some very elaborate ones, very large elaborate structures too. So, um. But remember, if it's, I mean, this new proposal, if it's under that, was it a hundred square feet, uh? In size, that means not coming for a zoning permit. You're allowed to do it, but it's the setbacks we're really looking at as a setback in all these. Cause that's some of the issues we've run into also recently, um, as we've been trying to review some of these applicants coming through. And most of them are already in place, essentially asking out, as we're, is there asking to change something or move something? We're seeing, you know, swing pools very, very close. We're seeing. Gazebos, we're seeing, we're seeing certain things very, very close to defense lines, very, very close to the neighbors' properties. And then we get complaints from the neighbors that they're, they're coming here, they're building these. So this just imposes, really it's that setback is what we're looking at. More so than like design review, you're not coming for design review, you're not coming for, um, at you doing zoning permitting honestly. On some of these, but it's, it's just making sure that you understand that you have to follow the setbacks if you meet. These definitions here. So you're not right up on your neighbor's property. I think decks we've had an issue with, um, hard to find decks in the past. Um, how those aren't been put up, um. From the past, like early recently, actually. Um, so yeah, it just sort of helps refine some of that. But if you feel free to make suggestions or changes, if it's too, you know. Too stringent or too strict, or do you think there's a better way, like as you know, and we can definitely take it back and look at it.
I'm just trying to think this through, like, so somebody could have, a family could have an above ground swimming pool with a gazebo. But then they can't have a swing set. Right? Cause that would be tricky.
Well, if you ask for variance.
I, you wouldn't guess anything. I mean.
So yeah, you could have a total of.
Yeah.
Yeah, you could have a total of two accessory structures, which include. Um, gazebos, pergolas, above ground swimming, swimming pools. And then recreational structures. So playset, swing sets. So yeah, you would be limited to those two, but. Um, I mean, that's kind of common to put some sort of cap. I mean, if you want to up it to. Three or four, whatever you guys are comfortable with, that's.
Or just split similar categories maybe, but.
Yeah, that is legit what you're thinking. It's too much. It's too tight.
Yeah, it's just, it's word apply, I mean, it's hard, it's hard to define that, make it one set number for everybody does can apply to everybody, um. And also, but try to also be a little more restrictive of. You're not just packing your bags with these, we're not talking about swing, we're talking about a giant structure, so.
So you wouldn't take a model, um, swing set as a structure?
No, I don't think we would probably consider that as a structure.
Okay.
I think we're thinking more like a, these bigger.
Built into the grounds.
Things, slides coming off, um, climbing stats, you know, location. And, and size wise too, you know, if it's, if it's that hundred square feet too.
Well, you have a lot like that apartment building in these town. You have these huge lots. I mean, people who put a lot of fun stuff on there. And do it nicely.
Well, I just think like a lot of people, like, if you, let's say you have a hot tub with a gazebo over it, right? That's two structures technically. I don't.
I understand, no.
No, I just think, yeah, she seems very restricted.
Yeah, yeah, I think it could be more.
But I get it, because if it's all come up, like in a small area, that's one thing, but.
And it's that, and then, I mean, some of that too, maybe it's discussing more of the, just the setbacks on all those limits.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, yeah, it's just, we can work through it. This is the discussion.
While kids are little, then they go away, you know, it's just tired that way.
Does the size of the lot or the property make a difference either? I mean, I mean.
Good, good point. I mean, yeah, I mean, that's.
If you have an acre or two acres and somebody has. Quarter acre, I mean, it's gonna look more compact and less space you have.
Right? Right? I just think about it, you know, like when my son was little, we had a trampoline and we had a swing set. And we had a gazebo. Uh, we would have been in violation of this. And I never, it never looked junky at all.
Were they all over a hundred square feet?
Well, I don't, but you know what I'm saying? Like, probably, probably, yeah. I would just imagine for a lot of small, a lot of families, that would be an issue.
I guess maybe the temper, maybe it's.
Maybe, oh.
Maybe it's a temporary structure, but maybe it's a movable temporary type things to look at. I mean, that would take away your issues with trampolines, would take it away. Issues with even sort of, I mean, it's supposed to be had like a. Kind of a portable, portable things you would have out there, um.
Yeah, we could make it something like. It, it, that accessory, you could add to the definition of accessory structure and put in there that it's something that's affixed to the ground.
Like a permanent structure?
Yeah.
Yeah, also maybe, you know, we have, I know we have, you know, minimum. You know, if it's under that hundred square feet, but maybe there's. Or it's maximum, wherever, but maybe it's making another level of if it's, oh, this kicks in where it's over that number too. So if it's, you know. Zero, a hundred, two, whatever, yeah, accessory structure, but it doesn't need that building or need that zoning permit. But maybe it's anything under that too, is, you know, the hundred to a zero or one square feet is, um. You know, maybe that just, I mean, that's accepted out of this, you know, maybe those super smaller structures. I mean, I'm thinking even like, um. Kind of like pool storage box, right? Or whatever, your outdoor mailboxes, right? How that works. I mean, that's.
Just lead to a lot of.
And if you look at the, if you look at the exceptions on there, um, you know, what's not included. You know, that sort of defines some of those things. There's sort of that same idea. So maybe it's maybe making that a little bit. We can tweak that a bit. I mean, it's accepted out of here are. Mailboxes, statutory art objects, local libraries, somewhere uses clotheslines, seasonal decorations, arbers, trellises, gardens, birdhouses. Bird baths, bird feeders, lawn furniture, raised garden beds and similar landscape, uh, containment materials. Hanging walls and similar manmade lawn, there's getting elements. So maybe it's just us working and work with Evan and come back some ideas to. Tweak that portion of it to address some of those smaller temporary items in there. Um. I guess, I mean, overall though, I mean, I guess, obviously we'll work through it and they'll come back to you guys again, but. Is this generally, I think we have a good direction at least about the concerns of it, um. Maybe that's what this is for. So, do we have any, are there any more thoughts or comments or things that you'd be worried about? I mean, yeah, yours makes good points on that.
Yeah, I, I just think the structure issue needs to be thought through more.
Okay.
Accessory buildings, of course, that is what it is, a frame of the building.
Yeah. Permanent is, and non-permanent, I mean, cause you could get, like you had a list of all the different things, bird baths and of course. I mean, anything that's not permanent can be moved. I mean, if there's an issue with the setback. This is the only thing that with the setbacks would be with something that's permanent. Right? That you're not just gonna be able to move once somebody puts it in.
I think that also addresses maybe the swing issue too, right? If you've got a, you know, a temporary little playset, well, you know, teach us the swing and, uh. Far or ever across little playground that can be moved around or sort of, you know, or maybe it's, you know, got a couple of country.
Even some of the above ground pools are more.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Seasonal too nowadays, they're big.
Yeah. Versus something where it's, you know, a large built. Play structure that's realistically, it's fairly permanent on that property.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so maybe we can work on some of those, those language a little bit to sort of a, address that and make, or clarify that, I suppose.
Great, was that one?
I did want to ask, um, how are we feeling about the, uh? The no, no zoning permit required for anything less than a hundred square feet. Is that? Too, um. Too, too liberal of an approach?
I'm in a situation where my neighbor were in an HOA. But we're a single family and they want to put a accessory structure. Right outside my house. You know, there's no boundary lines there. So that's a, a debate that happens and I was relying on. The, the village being able to permit that according to village rules, at least since our HOA. We have lot lines, but I mean, really. I don't know how well-defined they'll be used for that without any guidance or permitting at all. So two hundred square feet, I liked that. I think that was the current one they told me when I looked it up.
Uh, yeah, before it gets into the accessory structure versus accessory building.
Yeah. So lowering it to a hundred kind of bothers me, cause then you can put a little tiny piece of junk out in your yard. I don't know.
It's, no, it's very good. All of this, right? It's that balance of how much regulation, how much restrictions. We're just sort of looking at different ideas and options. I mean. Uh, yeah. Man, ten by ten, you know, ten by ten shed.
Yeah, they're.
Not a small, I guess that's not really, it's not a small.
Yeah.
Thing either. So maybe, you know, zoning clearance is really not. Um, I mean, we don't require full design review for those.
No.
So it's just coming in for zoning clearance, showing us, and we don't even require a full engineer or. Drawout site check. We say, show us a, for something like that, for like a shed comes in, just so everybody here knows. All that process works if you haven't done it before. Um, usually we'll give you a wind just printout and say, show us on this drawing. You know, where your location is, maybe for your shed or your buttons, whatever it may be. And then, you know, we draw it to scale on, on wind just, we'll draw the scales showing here's where it's maybe relative property lines, setbacks, all of that. So that's our current process for that, um, for just like for shed essentially. Um, and then our engineer looks at it for, for any inch blocking or anything else, but.
So I'm curious about an HOA. Doesn't have to follow setbacks?
Well, if you look at this whole mess, it's a whole nother thing, but I mean, from what I understand, when they built this. Lots were small and the setbacks for HOA multifamily were less at that time. Than single family dwellings. They are single family dwellings, but they were condo for the purpose of setbacks. Things less. But you're talking.
But, uh, I mean, granted, yeah, Jay's question, you know, they have to follow the villages code. Usually HOAs would be more restrictive than, than the villages. Or the, uh, the homeowner or the, any covenant on properties. You know, they also have to follow the villages code. We get that question a lot here where it's.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, we, we, we look at it to the villages code. That's all we review. We don't look at it for HOAs or for covenants or for any sort of homeowners or. Any, you know, kind of restrictions on there. It's a little guy that does a meeting of the villages code. We'll sign off on it. Yep, meets the village's code, you're approved. Maybe get sometimes get the, that gets like pegged, but make sure you talk to your homeowners association because. They may have more restrictive, uh, you know, more restrictive requirements or rules on there.
So the.
That's not really anything the village has.
The HOA can't be less restrictive than the villages.
But it can.
It can.
But they're not gonna get a village approval for it. You still, you still have a village approval.
So, yeah, so it would make no sense.
Yeah, I mean, many people have just no restrictions, right? No HOA, no, or no covenant on their property.
Trying to get rid of it, so.
That way it mattered at all, because those are zero restriction by the homeowners associations, right?
Mm-hmm.
But you still would follow the villages, so. But yeah, usually we see, when we see active, you know, active HOAs, we usually see that's a lot more restrictive than the villages. So I think what I'm hearing though is that maybe keeping it as is for the accessory building side, at least, at least coming for zoning clearance.
Yes, yeah, I think you might want to do that. Cause I see people just throw those things up, period, without thinking a thing of it. There's kids at Menards. You just buy it, you pound a few nails, you set it up. I mean, it's not like a mental thing where people are thinking they're doing something wrong.
Let's see swing sets and stuff.
Yeah, but if you were to at least have it there where they have to come in, if someone sees it in the neighborhood and doesn't.
Yeah.
Like it.
Let me ask you, would you? Maybe kind of with both of these, this, the kind of outdoor recreational structure and the accessory building thing. Maybe would you want it flipped as to where? I mean, a lot of people probably don't get zoning and building permits for their. Like above ground pool or some of the smaller stuff like that. So I mean, maybe we just codify that in kind of a. If it's under two hundred square, or if it's under a hundred square feet for an accessory structure. You don't need a zoning permit or a building permit where if it was an accessory building like a shed. Uh, if it was, the, the, you just need one straight out, something like that.
So more flexibility with the structure with more.
Yeah.
I think that seems more reasonable and, and I think more likely that people would. Feel like they would think that they need to perhaps get a permit as opposed to.
Just throwing it out.
Right.
Well, sheds are, if you drive around looking at stuff, sheds are things that typically can go very ugly and very sideways quickly. Where taking out a swing set or these accessory structures don't seem as bad as these sheds can be.
And we've got, I think even having the.
They're not.
Cause zoning clearance for it is nice too though, because of multiple, we get the, and that means we look at it too, is the materials, but, um. So those sizes too. I think we've, we've got those sizes of those accessory sheds, wherever, I think pretty well. Balanced now. It seems like we were using for a while, we were getting these a lot. I mean, we went larger, larger building, storage, building the backyards. I think those, we don't see as many variance requests from application request for those. So I think that's probably good and I think that's probably. I think we have that clearance coming. I think it's helpful to sort of see that. And then also, I think it's helpful to have those, you know, setbacks so people can sort of think about, oh, I shouldn't put this. And we've seen a lot of drainage management. No, I shouldn't build, I can't build this shed in the drainage management. So they come in and we, we let them know, yep, can't build here, can't build on the side here, but you know, move it across, so.
What about chicken coops, Jay? Is this?
Or accessory building?
I bet it would be.
But it's all, though, so, I mean, I mean, anything with its own.
Yeah, my concern is, I always think we don't want to put additional like. Rules on people that if we go down the street, we're gonna find five out of ten houses are in violation of it, right? Like, so you gotta think about that.
Yeah. Cause they're already there.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah, I think maybe, there's some room for thing up.
Mm-hmm, agreed, agreed.
I think generally, I think going this, yeah, making, I think at least clarifying some additions is good.
Yeah.
However, we clarify them, it's good to have.
But with the set, I'm just, it just occurred to me, with the setbacks and with the movable accessory structures. If there is a complaint.
Yeah.
And it is specific in the zoning. Then you can at least, you know, it's not hard to say, hey, we've had complaints, you need to move this off of the setback. So there's a reason to have it more specific that way, you know what I mean? So at least if there's complaints. Right?
I'm trying to think like what we're here, thinking like, hey, what complaints are coming out now too, um. What type of things too, right? We probably most likely be. It might, it probably be recreational type. I, so I mean, I think it's in people, oh yeah, this is my neighbors, got a trampoline. Here we go, right next to my fence and they're jumping over and looking in my yard and I guess do we, you know, maybe that. You know, maybe that, does that fall in your zoning? Is that falling into something else? Maybe it's a different, you know, type of, maybe it's just our general. Noise or nuisance, I. For you can have a little more flexibility on that. Um. Yeah, I hear what you're saying though, like it's all. How much regulation, how specific regulation, trying to make it fair for everybody. Both sides, right? People wanna use this, you know, why have it? And the people have to watch somebody else who has it. You know, the neighbors too, so it's trying to make it for both those people, but.
Yeah, I think setbacks are good. I think putting some restriction, if we're gonna put restrictions, I think you're right, we need to have like lot sizes.
Yeah.
Taking it into consideration.
And since they haven't all been permitted, how do you even know? Somebody's got one and someone wants to put one up and he says, well, my neighbor did it. Well, they did it ten years ago.
That's.
Right.
Really running into that, uh, I mean, some of these, for some of these measures are in place, but we run that a lot with fences. That's the thing, the village should not permit fences until. At that recently, but five years ago, six years, I don't know how many years ago, but not huge, not very long, but long enough. Where we've got a lot of fences that are either where they're not supposed to be, which is live in the drainage easements. Or the utility easements. So we get those and, you know, people come in for their fence, my neighbor's got one, wanna hook into it, well, you can't do that. And those either like, we're like, no, we're not, can't make an exception for that. You can't build in a drainage, just been sorry. Um, and I think Chippy Ridge is a big one on that one, cause it got those rear drainage es. So, um, so yeah, I mean, it's. You know, we're not gonna go along and say, yeah, you have to take this down. Um, but it's when those future ones come up, it's. Yeah, I'm sorry, it's, you gotta move away from the fence line, you gotta move from property line, you have to, you know, setbacks or even a little smaller building, but. Um, and we sort of just will work through those as we get those and, you know, some of those, if it's, you know, a very. Serious one, like if it's a, you know, really important one to somebody, they can come in for a variance or inception to it.
Yeah.
But generally, I mean, it's not been all that, or as to say, yep, no, you gotta move your shed five feet forward or three feet forward. Um. It's just. Yeah, it's a balance.
Could you try again?
No, no, I can't. Thank you.
None of us can.
Thank you, sorry. But.
Yeah.
But yeah, we will come back. We'll, we'll tweak this, we'll work out, we'll work through some stuff and we will bring this back to the. Back to ZBA. Return you.
It's a public hearing, do we need to open it up to the public, even though? Just as a technicality?
I don't think it's a public hearing. Is there anybody here?
A shed.
I got a feeling he'd speak up if I want to. Uh, let's go on to ZDA two zero two four, DAP zero one six, public hearing for text amendment. Revising the village of Roscoe zoning ordinance, section fifteen dash five 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 and fifteen dash four oh nine. Relating to solar energy collection systems.
So this is related to, I, if, if you guys remember the variance that came through. Last month. For the solar, um, solar panels uh, off of Main Street. We wanted to do a little bit more cleaning up of this section too, because a little. Some of the things with the uh, the use was unclear a little bit and then the. Fencing standard and the height standard was unclear. I don't know if you remember. So what we did in short with this is. We better define the use of solar energy collection. We. Scaled it out, so if you're on a larger lot in the in the red line, you can see that it's. Systems on parcels larger than two and a half acres and setback further than thirty five feet from all lot lines. They don't have to meet that fencing standard. And then the maximum height standard right under that, systems on parcels larger than two and a half acres and setback. Further than thirty five feet from all lot lines. They're limited to twelve feet in height, because if you remember, the maximum height standard is calculated based off of the fence. And if we don't have a fence standard, we need to add something so that they have a cap on the height. Um, and the last thing we did is we made it a special use permit. For uh, residential properties to have. Uh, private solar panel uh, collection systems. That was. Um, based on comments from ZBA and then village board that we heard. Um, when we were processing the variance, so. We're looking to just kinda clean things up here and then maybe provide a little flexibility to people on larger lots that are maybe a little bit more secluded and then. Kinda give ZBA a little bit more um, oversight on the. The use.
And this just deals with standalone units, not units that are on the structure.
Correct, yep, yep.
Maybe it's not in the section, but didn't we say we wanted to have some kind of like landscaping around it?
Well, yeah, to look at those things, if you're a neighbor, two and a half acres or. You have your nice two and a half acres and you're looking at that. I drove out to Iowa yesterday. And a lot of these farms, which aren't all that beautiful already, now have these big ground mounted. Panels. And I wouldn't wanna see that inside the village, it doesn't look appropriate. They're huge.
Right, and even with that one that we had, that exception for, or that, the one that we had for last month. Didn't we? We suggest that they had to have.
Do some landscaping.
Mm hmm.
That all got dropped too, didn't it? I'd have to see there. The restrictions.
It was.
There was nothing to care about.
The condition, no, it was same requirements you guys made. It was, yeah, your findings were adopted, so yours.
Yeah, they just pissed.
Yep, your. Your restrictions, including landscaping, the, or the. The trees, the trees go away, you have the, you lose the bushes, that was all. Incorporated as part of that.
I didn't see that. Plus.
It wasn't even part of it.
With it being a special use too. Uh, if you wanted to. Add landscaping at that point, if somebody came forward looking for a special use permit as a condition, you could add that as well. Or I mean, we could add that. As part of just the regular code too. Those are both options that you, you could think about.
There'd be something said with the landscaping as far as, as for, as used for screening. You know, being more, I mean, cause you could just, somebody can throw some flowers up and say, hey, there's my landscaping.
Mm hmm.
So the intent of the landscaping is to more for screening purposes, right?
Right.
So maybe we need to be specific there. You're gonna put landscaping.
Yeah, I agree. I think it needs to have some screening provision.
Maybe the screen provision goes in as part of the code and then we can, we can work on that, we can work on some language for that. And then the. Of that, cause it has come in, come here for a special use, so maybe that's maybe percent, here's the type of screening where. You know, maybe it is, it is maybe it's not landscape, maybe it's a fence, maybe it's a single fence. On some of these properties, I can see. Just a fence might be fine, right? You know, the whole property line fence, but maybe it's a fence or maybe it's. Hang on the angle, maybe it's just the, the berm, or maybe it's, you know, stream the road. For the most part by the houses in front of it, and then maybe just a couple, I don't know, on the side. So maybe it is requiring that. Screening provision, so, but it's not necessarily. Specified in the code, here's the exact type of screening. Cause it will come, uh, that's why I like their suggestion to bring in a special use, cause then it's, you have a chance to look at those. Really on case by case, right? Yeah, you can have it here, you can have it these sizes, here's the, the amounts. For the different sized bots, however. We want specifics of that property, so.
It'll be good if they know coming in.
Maybe I could have some.
So that way there, you know, you just don't drop, um, drop it on them at the time.
Yeah, I agree. I think that's a great idea.
So the screening in residential. Or wherever. What does that look like for, they have to have it on all four sides? To screen? I mean, it seems like when we were talking with the gentleman last month, that was just kind of one side was really the issue.
Right.
So how does it go around all four sides? And is that sound like? You could put up a fence, like a fence a couple of feet away from it, all the way around it? Can you call that screening?
Yeah, I mean, you could, I'm not sure this board, would you approve? I don't know if I, you approve a twelve foot fence around a property in a residential? I mean, I, I have to say, I have, I certainly would imply it has to have that, so. And that's why it's a special use for when they come in and present to the board, here's my screening and you guys say, nope, that screen's not going to work.
Yeah, and the one from last month, we said it only had to be the one side because he already had natural screening from the trees on the other sides. And remember, we put that language in there that if those trees, if he didn't have that.
Then.
Then it became a violation, yeah.
And you would have to either repair, put, bring in the trees back in, or you had to remove, uh, you had to remove. So this, that came in as a variance and that I think that's what we're trying to avoid is having some of that come, have to come in as a variance versus, which is clearly. It's a large property, it's got something different. Um. Well, they got, you know, the way he did it specifically, or there's other ways of doing it. This allows you to look at that without having that, you know, hardship requirement of it. It's saying, yeah, generally we allow, that's what special issues are, right? Generally we allow in this district or in this property size. However, the property might need to be adjusted or the project might be adjusted a little bit for that particular property, for that use, so. It really just turns him from a required variance to special use. And then, yeah, we can add the, yeah, so you're right, which when somebody said that, you know, they know coming into it about the screening, yeah, so you have to have screening. Come in, show us your screening, show us that it works in your neighborhood or works in your large property or works on your, you know, farm someplace.
That's where they'll be closer to meeting the, the zoning.
Mm hmm.
Before they come in, you know, and instead of having to figure it all out.
And we absolutely were, but I mean, that other meets with and talks to almost everybody coming in for these big projects. They would be told that anyway, but I think it's help. Yeah, I think you're right though, it's helpful having in the code. If they go through the code, yep, I know I have to have some sort of screening here.
Right.
So.
It's not subjective.
Yeah, yeah.
Look at that a little more. Don't work with.
I think what you have here is pretty good, it's just a matter of adding a little bit to it, right?
Those sizes are already there. Do the acres, I think I'm looking at the.
Yeah, two point five acres.
How do you come up with two point five acres?
I think that was taken from the variants of the past and I think we kinda just. Thought that two, two, two and a half acres was. Enough that they would have to be within their accessory, again, that, not to go back to accessory structures, but. They would have to be, um. Under the two hundred square feet for their accessory structure. So two and a half acres for two hundred square feet. Is somewhat manageable and then the thirty five foot setback from that for an accessory structure. Is.
Is there any limitation on how many solar panels? What kind of field they can put there? If you have two and a half acres, maybe you also wanna power. A small house building.
Would all world be in compliance? If they're applying today? They're a mixed little farm.
Yeah, but they're not that tall, right? They're.
Yeah.
They're pretty.
For sure.
Yeah, I think they're four. Maybe four feet tall.
So whatever we do with solar. Um. Conforms or takes into account whatever federal or state. Laws, I, I keep thinking there's gonna be something there that, oh, that forces us to allow. Certain things that maybe don't want. To allow. And you've, you've, you know what that, all that is, uh, as far as regulations, Devin.
Yeah, I could, I could take a look to see if there's anything that the state or the federal government would be. Making sure that municipalities are doing. Um, I'm not aware of anything right now that says that these things, like solar ground mount systems have to be permitted by right. In, um, all residential districts. And I don't, I'm not familiar with anything that does say that and.
Um. Yeah, all I know, see, all I'm familiar with is the, I know that the community solar, there's restrictions or requirements that allow those, those are for the larger ones, so. The big, big, right, giant commercial industrial scale, but then really it's that middle scale that Illinois particularly has. Requirements essentially, for the most part, we allow those, but, um. I think most of all do have the same subject to these sort of general use provisions or location provisions, so. Um, yeah, it's more so for the bigger, for the medium side, well, the giant ones too, but really it's the, the middle sized ones that have those. Sort of what you're talking about, I think, the.
Well, I'm, I'm talking about, I guess, residential.
Right, I'm thinking residential, twelve feet high is pretty damn high.
If they, if they don't say, we have to allow these things because that's been the big push.
Yeah, well, I guess, I guess if we get to that point, we will deal with that. So. I guess if we get to the point where somebody says we can't do it, you can, I mean, that's happened very often, right? We had that with cable. And railways and. We work it, we work through our codes and, you know, if there's any exceptions in there where we can have some control over that, we do, but I think it's. Very bad to like trade guests, you know, what could possibly happen in the future with regulation or something, you know, having forces, yeah, I think, I suppose. Forces to allow swing sets in every area. Um.
Big people.
You know, gardens are exceptions, actually accessory uses, yo, garden boxes, the gardens are exceptions there because Illinois has a right to garden law, right? We have the right, we can't restrict gardens. Um, can't zone out gardens, so you can't have gardens in your backyard, so, um, home gardens, I should say. So.
That's what.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and if it does, then we will, we'll adjust and we'll say, yep, this doesn't apply to those, but. I don't think we, yeah, should try guessing too much. We should try to put in place something that we think is good for the village. As we are, without worrying about, you know, future. Or regulation or state regulation. Let's get something that works and saying, yep, this is how we want the village to look, this is how we want these to be implemented. And then we go from there. It sounds like we're fine with solar in general, right? It's not assuming no solar or no ground mount.
We just don't want it to be an eyesore.
Exactly.
Right.
So I think that's what you guys need to do.
They have a high probability of being a.
Not to be an eyesore, yeah. I think those suggestions we've made, you guys have made today, I think that makes it. It's pretty good, so. And we can tweak these and. Get back for now. I'm just sorry, would you, um, well, it's too higher, I think it's too high.
But that's why you went with the lot sizes over two and a half, right? Cause you thought that there's more room to.
Right. Yeah.
I mean, this one that was approved. How high is that? Fifteen?
Yeah, I think fourteen or fifteen. I'm curious when that goes in, if we're gonna be saying.
Uh, yeah.
Bad decision on that, but.
Uh.
Hundred percent.
Well, I went, the only place really is like from the parking lot from the west.
And with screening, right? We shouldn't be able to see that, so.
Yeah, yeah.
So. I mean, he said that the only place on Main Street was if you looked right down the driveway, so.
Cause I was, I've, I've driven by it a couple of times in before and then even recently again, and I'm not quite sure. Picture exactly how that is, pretty open in there to me, but.
Trees are so tall.
Maybe I'm looking.
And that was the same issue he had because the trees, cause I'm thinking. If the trees are so tall, you can see everything under them. But then that was the reason why he needed him so high so that he could get to the sun.
Yeah.
You know, so.
So are they using companies to install these and buying them? Like they are the roof ones? Cause those, they're nice on the roof, but those contracts and things become a real headache for people resailing and. Could also be a headache for a village, once somebody is doing something we don't like, if they're contracted. In the small print. And they're rented. For perpetuity.
We don't have that. The village was a part of the contract, so.
No, I know you're not, but how are you gonna enforce on somebody something you don't like when they are?
Yeah.
That's the weird.
Well, I mean, that would run with the contract though, right? So they are just. The new buyer or the new owner would be liable for it.
Yeah, I would, I mean, yeah. Picked that risk, I guess, but.
I mean, they have to record that, I suppose, right? If it's a contract that runs, you know.
I don't know. They're, they're, the potential is something that goes on for a very long time. Because of how they're sold, that's all I'll say about that, and thinking about it. So you let someone do this, okay, but we're letting everybody do it, we decide to hate it, they're stuck with something. For a long time, I'm paying for them. And the leases and all the crazy stuff these solar companies do. They are crazy. And people signing for them don't necessarily understand.
And a lot of people are doing it because of the incentives.
Yeah, a lot of it is the Wild West too, I think, right? It's like, there's just not a lot of regulation on it.
I don't know, I see people in a lot of bad situations with those things, but I mean, I want one on my house, on the roof. But I'm waiting for a company that's not gonna carry on for ever charging me for it.
Hopefully, what you're gonna see in the future is that they're gonna be much more eye, you know, pleasing to the eye. I mean, I see now they're starting to do shingles that are you know, they look like regular shingles.
Well, they're out, you can do those.
Yeah.
I'm waiting for the residential nuclear power plant. See how I get that fast.
We're on topic now, but there's one that just had the initial testing on.
I mean, some residential batteries that go with these big solar things. I mean, they put them in your house, they're big as your refrigerator. And your neighbor blows up, now you're gonna catch up there, I mean, there's, there's nothing to think about with that stuff. Cause they're also starting to wanna collect that completely and be off the grid. They're doing it in Florida and it's working out good so far.
As we saw here, L I D, de-incentivizing some of this too, as of January first, is probably what we're trying to. This, this, sell back, where you can't sell it back at market rate anymore, so. Just offset your own property, way off topic, so.
The good news isn't that chicken coops are no longer popular. I'm just saying, like, it used to be every single week, we, every other month, we had chicken coops, and now we don't.
I think a lot of people just don't come, they don't even think about it, they pick up a chicken coop at Menards and they throw it in their yard.
Oh, you think so?
Yeah, I don't know, I don't think we see.
Maybe it's just such a bad.
I think it backs out, I don't think we've had that many applications come through, I think it definitely chicken coops, honestly, relative to.
For a while, it was a bad though, for sure.
Oh, I think it's still out there.
I've always said of all those chicken coops we've approved, how many are still?
Yeah.
Or even go all the way in actually.
I imagine it's a pain to take care of.
Someone's gotta be the coyote.
So moving on, I think any old business, anything anybody you know, with the, the solar thing from last month was approved, so. And I see no public comment, unless our fire department wants to make a statement?
No, not tonight.
Okay. Thanks for sitting through all this, I know.
It's nice to know it's coming up, so.
Yeah. Need a motion to adjourn?
So much.
Okay.
Tishing my blue second by Reagan. Pushback?
Yes.
Blue.
Yes.
At six forty-five. Oh, it's good though. Thank you, Evan.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Evan.
Thank you.